You're alive, right.
Good evening, members and also members of the public. Yes, unfortunately, our is on holiday, I'm sure he's enjoying himself. Unfortunately, he was not able to come, so we don't have a chairman for us, chairman. I'm calling for nominations for a council to represent the planning committee in a chairman capacity. Do we have a nomination?
Yeah, I'm nominating you.
He's brought it in, mate.
Just while you're in the chair, we need to actually do it properly.
Thank you very much.
Oh, off the post, Michael, off the post, can I have a second for that, please?
We have a second, well, we've got it in face.
Margaret's going to second that, and then if we could just have a vote, please. Actually, no, I'm going to stay here.
You vote for yourself, Michael.
Well, we have an introduction and Dale is one who he covers it. It's important that those who are watching the screening and also the members of the public understand that our committee is an advisory committee of the Planning Committee of Santhurst Town Council. We make recommendations in these meetings once a month, which are then carried forward to Bracknell. It's a Bracknell case officer, planning case officer, who will make the final decision. What I am quite pleased about, though, when you actually look at the outcomes at Bracknell Forest Council, very often the comments that we have made, either in support of it with recommendations or where we've recommended refusal, those are carried forward. But it's important to understand the final decision is taken by Bracknell Forest Council, but we still provide an input and this is still a useful opportunity for the public to have their say and also for us to be able to discuss and debate. So we have in front of us the agenda. The first item of the agenda is apologies for
Apologies? Yes, that's Councillors Butcher, Woodson and Williams.
Thank you for that, Darcy. Then move on to the minutes of the planning meeting, which was held on the 30th of June. Do you have any, what have you got? I'll be signing them later. Basically, can I ask for your confirmation of approval of the planning committee?
Yeah, I'm asking to approve that.
That's unanimous as well. Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you for that, sorry. So you're going to
I'll propose, because I was
Margaret, second. Pass it around.
Sorry, the apologies was Paul Woodson, Dale and Allison.
Mike Butcher.
No, Mike Butcher.
And Ali Williams, yes.
Yes. Okay, then, so.
Darling, get copper.
Fine, in that case, then we now move on to the planning committee. Normally, we would actually go through the planning agenda, the way that it's been set out in this particular document. But we've got members of the public present, rather than for you to have to endure or enjoy the entire session of our planning meeting. We will be giving you the opportunity of having, expressing your concerns about a particular application. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to bring forward Planning List 28 stroke 2025, which is 250035353 Isis Way, Santhurst. So if we can have a look at it, it's a two-storey side extension and a single-story front extension.
It is, that is.
So I've had and we've actually got it up on the screen. Two-story side extension and single-story front extension, which I imagine the, well, the easier one is the single-story front extension. That looks basically like a a front entrance effectively, this has been brought forward. The two-story is effectively then with a roof design that is, I think, provides some symmetry in some ways to the property. And in terms of the considerations to it, it represents, looking at it this way, let's get it up.
Two. Is it? It adds two bedrooms.
It's
on the upper level.
Right.
From memory.
Because obviously there'll be the parking considerations, Hazel. Have you?
Yes.
You have any particular parking wise?
No.
So they're all
Oh, so it's one more bedroom.
It's, so it goes from two bedrooms to three bedrooms. So in terms of the parking requirements, it's unchanged. It's still two parking spaces. So that will be that, so. What I'd like to do at this stage is as we've got members of the public present, would you like to both come forward?
I'd just like to remind you, it's three minutes, so I'll
It is three minutes. We will be timy. We try to be democratic in order that people, every member of the public are giving attention in speaking. We rather hope that with your, what looks like your A5 sheet of paper, even smaller than that. Would you like to then talk to us and explain why you are concerned about this particular? I presume it has nothing to do with the front extension, is the side.
It's the side, only because I've looked from the back of our garden and it looks like the side extension will cut out natural light to our back garden. And we're not sure whether it would depreciate our value of our house. And also, we just feel it might over, the bedroom window at the back might overlook our back garden as well. So we're just a bit concerned that.
Okay, what number, what, what is your address?
Fifty-five.
Okay.
So
So we look at the location on Google, because that's what we do.
Yeah, look at the logo.
Basically, it's to do with the rear garden. What I would say to you, though, property prices and valuations are not a subject for planning. It's, that's, you know, a commercial aspect of it, but we are here to deal with the planning aspects of it, rather than any loss of value.
Yeah.
We'll probably, bring it up on Google, we will probably have a better idea. Because you talk about the rear window overlooking your garden, but surely there's already a rear window, isn't there, on the existing property?
There is, but it's further over us. We don't know how far it's going to encroach on our land. So that's our one at the end, this side, on the right-hand side, that's
Your number fifty-one, are you, or fifty?
Fifty-five. So the one with the red colour, that's ours. And then there's, it's opposite in the alleyway. But if you think they're going to come out.
Oh, I see, they've got a window on that side at the moment.
The wind, that window isn't going to be there currently. But we're just concerned that if that comes out towards the alleyway, then it might affect the back of our house and our garden. Because it's going to, I've taken pictures and it is actually going to cut out quite a lot of natural light to the back of our garden.
Because the sun comes up from the front and goes over the top. And as you can see, there's big trees over the back that are not ours, so it cuts out all the light in the afternoon. So we're not going to get any direct sunlight for
Are the trees in your garden or the neighbour's garden?
So that can
They're in the alleyway at the back and they belong to the Bracknell Forest Council.
Right.
This is, but the back is snap mails, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's a path, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, I know where you were.
So it's just going to block out a lot of sunlight and make it quite dark.
Just about thirty seconds left.
Three minutes, just Okay, then, right.
Can we have a look at the
But in terms of the trees, I must say, if you feel that that is also impacting the amount of sunlight, have you spoken to Bracknell Forest Council?
Yes.
Having approved?
They don't want to take responsibility for it. They said it's nothing to do with them. And I said, because we had an incident where one of them actually blew over into the car park behind and actually hit a neighbour's car. And they said, oh, well, if it happens, we'll deal with it then.
So that is three minutes.
Have they got TPOs on them or not? Have they got tree preservation or, because you don't know necessarily.
Probably because they're
George, retake your seat then, because I think you've covered in considerable detail the concern that you've got.
Can you pull up, Darcy, the location plan? That one, yeah. Okay, then can we go up to the floor plan? Existing or proposed? Proposed, I think.
Can we have, because again, can you, Hazel, see that? What the width is, the additional width of that extra
No, you can see that at the bottom.
Is it two point four metres? Can you see at the top? It's two point six seven five metres, so it's about seven foot, about eight foot. Okay, because there's a window there in existing and that is a window that's proposed. And then the window that was there is obviously gone now because of the side extension that's proposed. Right. Does anyone else have any questions before I sum up? Hazel, will you be looking at reasons maybe for, sorry, Ray?
I was just going to say that window, in the new window that's been put in that bedroom.
Yes.
That overlook, it'll overlook their garden, won't it?
But surely the one on the left also overlooks the garden there, doesn't it?
So it's a little bit further on.
It's like ours, the people on the left look over with two windows and our garden, and the people on the right, they've got two windows as well, looking into our garden and getting
It's a difficult one, because as Ray will know, on planning at Borough, obviously, loss of light is a consideration. Generally, it's dealing with the property itself rather than the loss of light into a garden. Because that really is very subjective as to how much loss of, you see, one can, as Ray knows, you can actually measure the loss of light, the angle of light and how it would impact, for instance, on an adjacent property. But when you're looking at the loss of light to a rear garden, that is very, very subjective. I'm of the view personally that it's difficult not to support the application, but to ask that the case officer in question should look at the potential loss of light to the rear garden so that they can then assess whether there is a material loss of light that could affect the application coming forward. Something that the Borough, I would like them to have a look at. So the recommendation that I would have made is that we would support the application, but with the caveat that we ask the officer to examine if there is a potential loss of light from the additional bedroom window. It's not a loss of, it's not a loss of privacy, it's a loss of light. So Hazel, I'm not sure that we've actually got any clues.
I'm looking through the extension.
We have loss of light within the property.
Yeah.
Other, what we can still cover it in the way that I've given the narrative without saying condition four one two six.
We've done everything with this one.
And then basically leave the case officer to undertake an evaluation.
I think it's worth doing, what you suggested.
Does anyone, you know, it's because I will be, I'll be putting that to the, that's my recommendation. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, then, will all those in favour of the recommendation indicate then, please? That's unanimous. So you understand, if I can just speak to the members of the public, members of the public.
Michael, we can't, we're in a meeting, we can't.
Okay, right, you've heard what's been said and you wanted to, of course, be able to see the minutes that will reflect what has been discussed, so it will now be left to the Borough to make the decision, because they're the professional people. They can undertake the necessary evaluation, they can make a decision. But you'll be able to follow the progress by going on to the Bracknell Forest Council Planning Portal without planning application number and see it progressive. But thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Excuse me. Is your mum still, your mum's okay?
Yeah.
She's just still okay. Kill me with that one, yes. I'm warrant, I'm a last name. Thank you.
Bye. Right, now we go back then to the list, planning application list number four, which is number one, Far Cross Close. Which is
Oh, yeah, conversion of the garage, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a habitable accommodation with side access door and in-force single-story rear extension beneath existing first floor. It's a retrospective application.
Yeah.
But as we know, we still consider retrospective applications on their merits.
Yes, I've looked at it and although they're taking away the garage, there's still sufficient parking. I know that area well, part of, actually campus down there, so.
And the habitable accommodation, though, is not a bedroom, is it? Because habitable could be. Have we got an internal who would actually identify what the garage is going to become? Because normally, of course, they describe them, for instance
It says on that one, conversion of a garage, oh, you should
Well, it's a habitable accommodation.
Habitable accommodation.
It depends how you describe habitable.
I mean, say that access door, that means they've got their own door.
Well, it
But it might be changed now and you're making it into a study.
Could be. Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see how it's described in the narrative.
We just get rid of all this.
One's the family room and the other's the work area.
Oh, Michael, you said those. Yeah, work.
It's a work room.
Yeah.
Which would explain why there's a side door, you know, if there's doing work on the car or doing timber work and such like.
Turned a garage into a family room with a workroom at the front.
Yeah, understand, because when you look at it, there's no, there's no bathroom downstairs. There's no opportunity to subdivide.
If somebody wants, if somebody's working in that room and they've got a business visitor, let's put it that way, it's away from the house, isn't it?
Yes. I think the only problem is if they need to wash their hands, they've got to go out, I think, by the look of it, either through there or automatically come out and then go through the front door to use the Councillor's cloakroom. But no, it's, it's, it's not as serious as a, as a workroom and, you know, people working more from home now as they are. I'm looking at it, I think it's quite sympathetic. Okay, there's the loss of a garage, but these garages nowadays are substandard in terms of the dimensions for modern cars.
Well, cars can't go in because they're too big.
I, I, yes, you know.
Garages these days.
So I'm happy to propose, Michael.
I, I support that. Right, well, we have a, you'll say
I'll propose, let's see.
Seconding. All those in favour of the recommendation to approve, that's unanimous for that. We now move on to, well, we've covered eighteen A Merton Close. Eighteen A Merton Close is described
I suppose, yeah, another
Retrospective application for single Rear extension following demolition of the conservatory. Again, if we have garage conversions and we have conservatory demolitions. So look at it like this.
This came up last time, I think.
Is it this one?
I'm sure you've seen
Eighteen A
There's two, if you look on the planning thing, there's two applications.
But that could be for something else, though, Hazel, could it? I don't remember it coming up, but you, you might be right.
If you look at the See, yeah, when I look it up, I just go by the actual in this
Oh, right, no, I always do it on the dress.
Yeah, so it doesn't bring you up, everything they've ever had.
Well, no, you'd have to go, as you say, on the address.
Yeah.
To bring up the history of it.
That's why I look at the address. So retrospective come
Yeah, it's retrospective.
No, this is
That's the current one.
That's the current one, retrospective, the winner.
These two there.
So this one.
They're both pending consideration, but they're for different planning numbers.
Yeah.
We just need to see this one, though, so we don't, we're not
Well, yes, I, I, I I think whatever happened with the previous one, I think we have to look at the current application as presented, which is basically is a to, for a single-story rear extension, there were no objections from neighbours. I think it seems to be reasonably straightforward. Yeah, that's single story, and this is for, to create what? Is it to create a bigger lounge or kitchen? With a rear extension.
Oh, I can't comment on this one because I couldn't get it up. Document not available, I got, ever.
But that was surely on the previous one, though, wasn't it?
No, that's what I've got on my notebook here.
On it, on it, but I'm
No, when I did it earlier today, I couldn't get it up.
Yeah, sometimes it does, because I tried to do it and it just doesn't let you in.
Yes.
Sometimes it's to it, yeah.
It's eighteen A.
I've not gone back to it.
Are you looking, though, Hazel, at maybe the outbuilding which was completed in March 2019?
No, no, if you look at the planning.
Okay.
We looked for, there were two.
This year.
It was two for the same day, still pending consideration, but only one is on our planning list.
I think that we have to deal with the latest one.
Yeah, the one that's
And then the case officer will pick up in, obviously, his or her summary. I personally have no objections to I'm, I'm happy to propose it if we've got a second one. Hazel, only obviously if you're satisfied that we've explored the discussions.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I know where it is and I know that, again, because I've been at the canvassing and delivering, so I am familiar with the property. So
So you're happy then to
Accept it on those grounds, because I know I'm familiar with it.
But we put it to the vote then, all those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you very much for that. Next one we've dealt with, fifty-three Isis Way, the next one is Nine Silvan Ridge. Silver Ridge, which is Little Santhurst. And that is for a, if I could find it. Silverly. Right, proposed, single-story front porch and wraparound rear and side extension plus internal modifications following surprising, following demolition of the existing garage.
What does it mean by a wraparound?
Well, we'll get, we'll bring it up, I think, on the screen if Darcy will do that. It's a strange wording, it's not something we see air from a wraparound.
I think that pertains to, I'm looking at the picture, how the extension wraps around that corner.
Yeah.
If I'm looking at that, my eyes just, it wraps it down.
Yes, yes, as opposed to being two separate blocks.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's a continuous or continuity of the rear section.
Strange word, is it?
So, and that's as, the front porch, well, is what we can see it. The wrapper on rear and side extension, it's a single-story. Internal modifications, which I don't think need concern us. And the demolition, now then, is there, is there any, well, no, there's no increase in the bedrooms because it's a single-story. So in terms of parking
There is a change of, of the, there is a change because it says existing first floor plan and proposed first floor plan. So do you want to pull that one out? Existing first.
That's the existing, at the moment, though.
Yes.
Those, and then the proposed, doesn't really show you inside of the That's all I've got.
Internal modifications as well.
But I think that's just showing what it's going to be.
So there is, there was no first floor plan because there is no increase in the number of bedrooms.
Yeah.
It's, it's quite a sympathetic extension to provide, basically to provide more family space. You know, a bigger lounge, a bit, there's a, what looks like quite a nice dining area that's been created. I think, I personally, I think it looks quite sympathetic. And there are no resident concerns. I'm happy to propose this application if we have a second.
Yeah, I can second.
All those in favour of the recommendation to approve, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Right, the next one then is Nine Ballyall Way. Section seventy-three application for variation of conditional planning permission. The application seeks to make amendments to propose elevations due to changes to land level. But I've had a look at it, it's, I think basically all they're trying to do is to, they probably realise where they've done the design with the architect, that it's actually on a bit of a slope.
Yeah.
So what I think all they're trying to do is just to level, level it out, which might make it slightly higher at one end and slightly lower at the other. I think ultimately it, it, it looks to be a cosmetic change. But obviously, they wanted to regularise it.
Yeah.
To ensure that they were compliant.
Yeah, it's good that they things that they need to
I think the case officer's probably had a word with them and said, you know, we've had a look at it and do you realise that there is this level issue that would need to be addressed? And therefore, what they've done is they put in these, I think it's, it's the existing planning application, it's twenty-four zero zero six seven seven, but with the, with, with the amendment. The amendments to the approved plans, I don't have any issues with it.
I'll propose, because it's an old
You're happy then to support it?
Yeah.
I'll propose it because it's an old
Second it. All those in favour? Right. Okay. Right, so we now move on then to Academy Service Station, now then, I don't think there's anything, Hazel, do you want to comment on it? You've been on the website.
There's no document.
There's no document.
Yeah, I couldn't find anything.
As we know, what it is, the narrative is digital display advertising board.
Oh, I, yeah, I saw that. I saw the advertising board, but, you know, I
Again, we can't make a comment on it because the documentation is not available.
Yeah, there is a thing on that saying
We can either approve or, 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 or objection.
Yeah, inadequate plans, it's two six oh, what minute?
It's not a number, has it, Hazel?
Yeah, it has.
Okay.
Two six oh two. On the information before, where the local planning authority considers it has no alternative but to refuse the application, there being no reasonable plans to come to any other decision.
Okay, fine.
Two six oh two.
All right, yes, yes, I'm happy with that.
Yeah.
Do we have a second? You're proposing the refusal. Margaret's being the second, all those in favour of recommending refusal in the absence of plans, that's unanimous.
We are lying to ourselves.
Right, we now move on to
Twelve Long Down Road.
Twelve Long Down Road, which is just before, it's by Mickle Hill, it's opposite Mickle Hill. It's quite a large property. But what they're planning, you've seen, you've seen the narrative, and in fact, I have to say, it's been a very well presented application, because the ET planning, who are the people who are doing the neighbour, are doing the neighbour plan for us, they've put in a report. Because it basically, what it is, it's a bridal business that they're running from the house. Or rather, they'll be running from the single-story rear extension, in which it's anticipated that there'll be roughly six visits a week. It will be obviously the couple and family members to try on, I'm guessing, to try on wedding dresses and such like. There were no objections from neighbours. The, also, what they've done, they've gone to the trouble of producing this eight-page report from a specialist company, they've also gone to the trouble of actually, you can't make highways to make a recommendation, and it's, it's interesting that if I read out for you very briefly, the erection of detached outbuildings to real property for the relocation of the existing bridal shop business. It concluded that the proposal can be accommodated without detriment to the operating capacity of the required parking stipulations. And then goes on to say, which clearly shows the site can accommodate the required parking capacity whilst allowing vehicles to drive onto the premises, turn around, park and drive out of the premises in a forward motion.
What number is it on the?
As such, it's considered, there's no reason why the proposal should be refused on traffic or traffic to access the grounds. But if we can, do you want, not to, do you want to look at page eight of the, of the ET planning report? Because it's quite a useful one, five point one eight is the one that I think we should probably just have a moment to reflect on, five point one eight?
On page eight, yeah.
It's on page eight.
No, no.
Yeah.
You're on five point one two now.
Page six, then.
Keep going. Page eight.
Five eight, five point eight now.
No, it's five point one eight.
All right.
Five point one eight.
Sorry. There we are.
Right, there we are, bring that up, that, right, fine, if we're just, but just reading it through. Is everyone already?
Yeah.
Okay, fine, we'll come. Any discussion, there's no objections from neighbours?
No, I mean, I, I'm quite happy with it, but my only concern is, and what we often do with, where we've got a building down the bottom of the garden, if I put it in that context, because we often put a condition on that it imposes a condition to say it's restricted and not to be used for habitable accommodation. So when these people finish with their bridal business, they might decide to, you know, have it as habitable accommodation, so we put in that condition.
I think that's, that's actually a very good, valid point that, you know, because it's likely that as a bridal shop, there will probably be, there'll be a toilet provision, obviously. It's about an hour.
Already been a habitable, property.
What?
I don't know.
Years ago, the bridal shop.
Don't know.
Don't know, but that's, that's what I would suggest.
I think it is a valid observation, because, you know, one doesn't know what will happen in the future. I, I think it is a valid observation because, you know, one doesn't know what will happen in the future. I think really what Hazel's saying, I think to safeguard the situation, to protect ourselves. If they were to, for instance, if the, if the house was to change hands.
Yeah.
They might, you know, the new purchasers might see that as an opportunity to provide a self-contained annex.
Yeah.
Because there'll be water, there'll be power, there'll be water, there'll be sanitation.
Yeah, it has already changed hands a couple of times in the property. Yeah, so, so that's what I would be.
But have you given Darcy the number?
Is there? I don't think there is. I've made one up over the years and we, I've just made a note.
Isn't it, the reference on this H H one?
Yeah, that's right.
Right, well, I'm, I'm happy to propose it with the comment that Hazel has introduced, which obviously is important. So material consideration, let's do it that way. Um, do I have a second for the application?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favour? Right, okay, well, in that case then, um, neighborhood plan, I'm not going to cover because Dale isn't here and I'm sure that he can catch up. He will do a much better submission than I could possibly manage. Most important though, is the date of the next meeting will be on the twenty-sixth of August. The meeting finished at twenty Tuesday one.